Welcome, everybody, to the Town of Chatham zoning. Welcome, everybody, to the Town of Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals hearing. Today is February 8, 2024. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID measures adopted during the state of emergency suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law until March 31, 2025. This meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately assess the proceedings, provided far on the order. A reminder that persons who'd like to listen to this meeting may call 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 627-766-660, or join the meeting through Microsoft Teams. The link is on the posted agenda. This is a live broadcast, and despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue here, or hearing, or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. To authorize this form of meeting, we will now call upon all the members to do so. Virginia?
I say yes.
Steve DeBoer says yes.
I approve.
Paul C. Simple, I agree.
David S. Nixon, I approve.
David H. Veitch, I approve.
And Randy Podash, I approve as well. So, the meeting is conducted as follows. Sarah Clark, to my right, the Town Central Permitting Officer, reads each application. Then the applicants will make a presentation, or their professional representative will do that. The public will receive an opportunity to speak in favor. Next, I will read the correspondences. Then the public has an opportunity to speak against the application, or ask a question, and then there'd be rebuttal time if needed. After that, the board may ask questions. Then we will vote to close the public hearing and move into deliberations. We vote on the merits of the application after that, and to prevail, an applicant needs a supermajority of four out of five votes. We will end the meeting with a verbal confirmation. So, we'll also have a five-minute time clock that is applicable to everybody from the public that wants to comment. They have five minutes. Please don't comment until you're at the microphone and recognized by the chair. We also have professional staff here. In addition to Sarah Clark, we have our Building Commissioner, Jay Briggs. We have Chantel Kilkeny, our Community Development Secretary, Chatham TV Coordinator Mark Van Bork, and Assistant Brianna Fitzpatrick. All the members here today are citizens, and we all try to bring our best selves to every meeting, very prepared. We've all been to the sites, and we've reviewed your applications, and it's important to understand that we have done that. So, voting today will be Virginia Fenwick, Lee Hovey, Paul Simple, Dave Nixon, and David Veitch. I'm not going to vote today. So, today, we also have a new associate member, and that's Steve DeBoer. Are you here?
Hello.
Yep. So, Steve comes to us. We're very lucky to have him. He is a prolific volunteer in the Town of Chatham. He just came from the HBDC, and he's had a lot of experience with that. He also has building experience, IT experience. He is a firefighter for where he used to live, a volunteer firefighter, and he is also on the Parade Committee for the Town of Chatham and works for Habitat for Humanity. He's a renaissance man, no doubt. And we're privileged and happy to have him join us.
Thank you.
We're going to have another new associate member next week, next time, so we'll get to that. So, we're going to have eight of us up here, and you'll probably agree that eight is enough. So, without any further ado, the first thing we would do is ask for a motion to approve the minutes. Paul?
Normally, I would make that motion, but since I was not present, I'll defer and refrain from voting on the minutes this time.
Right, okay. So, Ginny, can you fill in?
Yes.
Take your time.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of January 31, 2024.
The meeting held January 11. My bad, I should have asked you.
Dave Veitch seconds.
Okay, Ginny?
Ginny approves.
I approve.
Yes, and Veitch approves?
Okay, and I approve as well. All right, I think we're ready for the first application.
Application number 23-099, 45 Meadowview LLC, care of James M. Norcross Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 45 Meadowview Road South. Also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 10D, Block 21, Lot S9. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a conforming dwelling on a nonconforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The proposed dwelling will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered substantial alteration, and under the Second Except Clause of Section 6 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is 1,434 square feet, 8.5%, and the proposed building coverage is 2,478 square feet, 14.7%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming, and it contains 16,817 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw. This was continued from November 30, 2023.
Tony Norcross, welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Good afternoon, Jamie Norcross, representing Dan Russell. Dan is traveling, so he's participating today remotely. We were here back at the end of November with a prior design, and several of the members had concerns about the design relative, essentially to the scale, height setback from Meadowview Road, the mass of the structure. And so, we continued to allow Mr. Russell a chance to speak with his architect to develop a redesign, which he has done, and with the goal of addressing the concerns that were raised at the prior meeting. We think we have addressed the concerns with the revised plans that you see, and we hope the board members agree, to highlight the changes from the last plan for you. And that is the new site plan on the screen that Sarah has put on for us right now. So, to start with the height, this proposal, the new design, has a building height of 27.7 feet. The prior plan was at 29 feet, so we have reduced the height by that amount. In terms of the setback, the prior design, we were setback from Meadowview Road South about 26 feet. On the previous design, this one is setback 31 feet. I'd also point out to you that the setback to 31 feet is for the front entry that you see here for the overhang. So, as it relates to the actual mass of the structure, the main building, it's about 36 feet back from Meadowview Road South, so that has been pushed back substantially. The change to the footprint, so there's been a reduction in about 300 square feet or so of building footprint, and that primarily is taking place over in this area here. Previously, there was a two-car garage in this location that was proposed with living area above. The current proposal is now a one-car garage, still living area above, but this area has been shrunk. I think it's about 10 feet narrower than it was before. It's also been pushed back. The prior plan had it essentially at the same setback to Meadowview Road South, and this current plan has pushed back, stepped back a little bit from the rest of the home to add a little bit more dimension to the structure that you see there. It's also been, the width of the home, as running from east to west, is about two feet less than it was in the prior design. One byproduct of this was another concern that was mentioned during the first hearing was that it was very tight over on this side relative to the two-car garage and the turnaround, and how that was all going to operate. We think by shrinking this portion of the structure, it's actually created a much better turning area with the one-car garage and parking. And so, we think from a site perspective, it's a real improvement with the smaller design that you see before you today. Included in the, oh, let me back up, actually. So, as it relates to coverage, the prior proposal, we were at 2,400 square feet, which is 14.7% lot coverage. The current proposal, we're at 2,100 square feet and 13% lot coverage. So, again, we have reduced, I think, substantially from the prior plan. I've included in the packet that I gave today, there's a comparison, the prior plan with the numbers, setbacks, coverage, height, and then the current plan. So, there's two boxes there, so you can see the distinctions as to what was shown on the prior plans and what's shown on the current plans. The gross floor area number is a little deceiving, I'd suggest, because the, in terms of the change, because the basement's actually going to be larger on this current plan, because instead of a two-car garage on a slab, it's a one-car garage on a slab, so as a result, there's more area in the basement. It's not proposed to be finished as part of the project, but it counts toward the gross floor area calculation. So, as it relates to the first and second floor, the reduction in gross floor area is about 500 square feet. So, the massing of the structure, as you see it from outside the home, has been reduced, I think, substantially. Just to touch on the neighborhood, it's a 1960 subdivision. There are some homes, including this one, that were original to that era. There are a number of homes that have been renovated, a number of homes that have either been torn down, rebuilt, or they're vacant lots to start with, and with newer homes, and by newer, I mean primarily since 2000. And so, running through the assessor's records, and there's a two-page comparison in the packet of gross floor areas for neighboring properties. And what I found was, the newer homes, again, the structures that were built since 2000 or renovated since 2000, for the most part, they're larger, as you'd probably expect from the 1960s-era homes that were first built out in this neighborhood. And so, gross floor area numbers are 4,000, 4,500, 5,000 square feet or more, which is similar to the plan for you today. And so, I think what we are proposing is consistent with the homes that have been built in this area in terms of style, in terms of size, since 2000. So, this is sort of the evolution of the neighborhood, and I think this property, the design that we're proposing today for this property is consistent with what's gone on and the trend in this neighborhood in the last 25 years. The other thing that I would point out relative to the neighborhood is the topography, which I believe one of the members mentioned at the last hearing, is just how significant the elevation changes in this neighborhood. It's pretty unique just driving around. So, you come in on Meadowview, if you come in off Barn Hill, you're at the high point. It dips down quite a bit toward my client's property here on, if this work, here on 45. It's sort of, the low point's really at the road here, and then it goes up again on the water side significantly with the elevation changes. So, I went onto the property today, stood next to the house, and when you look around, you really see all the other homes, for the most part, the neighborhood are set up higher than the elevation for this property. So, it's not a situation where this house, although it is going to be bigger and taller than what's there now, is not really going to loom over neighboring properties, because the elevation changes are so significant that we really look up at the other homes. And while it is going to be higher than Meadowview Road South, that's also pretty consistent with a lot of homes in the area where the road is at a lower elevation than the lots, and so, the homes sit up higher than the road. So, if you drive around, you kind of see this on both sides. The houses are built up on the higher elevation just because of the natural topography of this area. I went through a criteria, or the criteria at the last hearing. I'm happy to do it again if you'd like. There's not a whole lot of change, so.
I think if you go through the relevant criteria, just to, you know, boil down on just the few ones that we had talked about.
Sure, happy to. Number one, adequacy of the site in terms of size for the proposed use. We believe it's adequate for the proposal. We will meet all bulk and dimensional setbacks. It's been reduced in height, and it's been pushed back about five feet further from Meadowview Road South. Number two, compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties. I think I touched on this a moment ago, but we think the size and the style of this home is really consistent with the newer homes that have been built in this area since 2000, and so, we're not inconsistent with the size and the style for this neighborhood, and I think the trend in this neighborhood that's taken place over the last 20, 25 years. Number four, suitability of the site, including but not limited to impact on neighboring properties or the natural environment. We're suitable for the proposed demolition and rebuild, no negative impact on neighboring properties or the environment. Number five, important ones, impact of scale setting and mass and neighborhood visual character. Again, I don't think it's going to be a negative impact on the neighborhood visual character. I think the design is very traditional design. I don't think anyone really was opposed to the design at the last hearing. Again, it was more the scale, and I think this design with the reduced size, the reduced height is really in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood. I certainly think it's appropriate for the rest of the neighborhood, and I do not think it's at all substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And I think the rest really are not applicable to the proposal for the redesign before you today. So, that would be our presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So, is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak in favor of the application? Please indicate if so.
I see no one to speak in favor.
Okay, and we have no new correspondence, so is there anybody that would like to speak against the application, either here or on Microsoft Teams? If so, make yourself known.
There is no one to speak in opposition or with a question.
All right, questions from the board? Dave Veitch?
I have no questions.
Dave Nixon?
I have none.
Ginny?
I have no questions.
Steve?
I have no questions.
I do, actually, and maybe I'm missing something, but mechanicals, generators, placement, do you have plenty of room for that, depending on where you choose to put those?
Yes.
Because I don't see them anywhere.
There's certainly a lot of room in the rear of the property, because we're well outside the setback, and then Dan is online as well. I know, Dan, are you having any plans for the mechanicals at this point?
Yes, the majority of the mechanicals will be behind the garage and will be to the rear of the patio, and they'll all be surrounded by vegetation, blocked by vegetation.
Okay, thank you.
Paul, do you have any questions?
I have no questions, but I do have a suggestion, and that would be, there's a lot of information contained in your analysis, several sheets and so forth. I think it would be helpful if this were a closer issue, if this information was presented in advance of the hearing, so that we had an opportunity to actually look through it and give it some thought. In this case, it's not significant to me, but I would make that suggestion in the future. Otherwise, no questions.
Okay, so, motion to close the hearing.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veitch seconds.
Ginny?
I approve.
I approve.
I approve.
All vote yes?
Yes. And Veitch votes yes.
And I vote yes as well. All right, so deliberations. Steve DeBoer?
Well, as you know, I wasn't here during the first discussion, but I am glad to see that you were able to make some concessions and reduce the size of the massing of the house and make it in complete conformance with the setbacks and the height. So, I appreciate that. I think everybody else does, too. Thank you.
Okay, Ginny?
I wanted to make a comment on, I really liked the comparison. I agree with Paul. It would be nice to have it in the packet, but thank you for putting that together. Very nice summary that you spoke in your comments, and then this was just very helpful. So, I agree with what Steve said. We talked and what you had shared in your verbal summary, that we talked about mass, we talked about three things in particular, height, road setback, and the sides. And you, as you articulated and have summarized here, you did a really very nice job in listening to the comments by the board and making the changes.
David?
Well, yeah, I agree with both previous. You're doing a good job of presenting some of this information to us, and as Paul suggested, that would be a good next step, certainly. But this is, I was not opposed to the previous proposal. I think this is better in many respects, the response to what fellow members had commented on, and certainly not substantially more detrimental. It's a good-looking project, and I'll support it.
Lee?
I agree with my colleagues. I appreciate the changes, and I think it's going to be a great addition, very appropriate for the neighborhood.
Paul?
Yes, I agree with the prior comments, and I did support it the first time around, and I think of significance was the support from the association, the Neighborhood Association, which had also reviewed it. So, I think it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
And Dave Nixon?
Jamie, I think you did a great job. I'll give you a B+. The only thing missing is a 3D presentation, but that's me, and it's not a requirement, as you know. But I think you did a great job in showing folks that a plan that really wasn't going to ride can be made into something that's attractive, beneficial to the neighborhood, and to the town. And as Ginny pointed out, I love this comparison chart. I mean, lay it out so I can read it, you know? So, B+ is pretty good for me, so, thank you.
And I agree with all my colleagues. I like that chart, too. If I had had it yesterday, I'd have an hour of my life back, so.
No, sorry.
So, I thought it was just kind of hard to figure out the exact heights, you know?
Yeah, there's a lot going on, yeah.
So, anyway, so, time to vote.
I will move to approve the application as submitted. I guess the question would be what's your plan in terms of construction?
Well, we'd like to be able to work through the summer. The association was okay with that. They just asked in that letter that was read last hearing that Mr. Russell tried to limit the exterior work to the extent he can, but they were okay with the fact that it would be exterior construction work during the summer. So, if the board feels the need to limit the hours, or perhaps weekends, Dan, I assume that's okay, but he would like to get started this spring and be able to work through the summer to get the house done.
We'll see what everybody's thinking.
Yes, Jamie. Jamie, there are hours. The association has hours that I can work, too.
Oh, on the letter, okay.
Yeah, we agreed on hours.
Am I hearing that the association has specific hours that they've requested?
They are. In their letter, it says work hours will be restricted to the period from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and then it goes on to say the builder will endeavor to limit outdoor work in July and August amongst their other requirements that Mr. Russell's agreed to.
So, they've indicated 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM?
Yes.
Is acceptable to the association? It's a little wider than what you would normally provide, but I assume there's no objection to standard conditions with respect to construction activity and vehicles?
No, that's perfectly fine.
And so forth, okay. All right, well, I'll move to approve the application as submitted with the condition that all construction activity and vehicles shall remain, shall be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner, and that construction activity will be between, in this case, 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM only, and that would be really not limited to the June 30, the Labor Day timeframe. In question of work on weekends, is there any position of the association with respect to that?
No, no work on weekends during the summer.
Right, all right, so there would be no, let me rephrase that, then. Between June 30 and Labor Day, there'd be construction, exterior construction allowed, but no work permitted on weekends and no construction activity between PM only. And that would be really not limited to the June 30, to Labor Day timeframe. In question of work on weekends, is there any position of the association with respect to that?
No, no work on weekend during the summer.
Right. All right, so there would be no, let me rephrase that then. Between June 30th and Labor Day, there'd be construction, exterior construction allowed, but there are no work permitted on weekends, and no construction activity between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM only. That's in addition to the condition with respect to construction activity and vehicles.
Five or seven?
Yes, correct.
Pardon me?
Five or seven, you said five.
If I said five, it should be 7:00 PM, I think.
Seven to seven were the hours for the association.
Because that's appropriate for the neighborhood. Seven to seven.
Paul, I think we should stay at five. I know what the association is willing to limit, but having people banging away while you're preparing dinner and all that kind of stuff is so annoying. So, I would say this is not a place where we have exception to the rule, that seven to five is plenty.
Did you want to say something, Dave?
I totally agree.
All right, why don't I revise my motion then to run that to 5:00 PM instead of 7:00 PM? And I'll move on the basis of those conditions.
Yeah, Dave Veach seconds.
Jenny?
Jenny approves.
Lee?
I approve.
Well?
All approves.
Dave?
I approve. Dave Veach approves.
All right, that's that.
Great, thank you very much.
All right. Want me to pass that down here? There you go. There you go. Good job. Yeah. All right, next application.
Application number 23-127, the James A. Doyle Revocable Trust of 2022, care of Theodore Strieber, 15 Linden Tree Lane, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 135 Lime Hill Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 12E Block 18, Lot B1. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling and a non-conforming lot via the construction of additions. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and it is located 16.7 feet from the Sutherland butter. The proposed addition will be non-conforming, and that it will be located 16.2 feet from the Sutherland butter where a 25-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 1,115 square feet, 7.9%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,659 square feet, 11.8%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and that it contains 14,007 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Welcome, Sam.
Yes. Good afternoon. I'm Sam Strieber. I'm the Doyle's architect. They bought the property 10 years ago, and with the intention of, with retirement in mind. Now, they have three sons with spouses, and a niece who might join in with her three children. The addition of a sunroom on the south side is a must. With the existing living room and the existing basement recreation space, they need another space, a social option, social gathering place. Also, there is outside space of a deck and a terrace in the back, but that's on the east side and pretty dark even in the summertime. So, can you get the plans, So, this is the front entrance. This is the living room, dining room, kitchen, and the sunroom space that we're needing to. And along this back is an existing deck and a brick terrace, which we're going to extend backward to provide a little more space. There's a master bedroom addition here, which takes us right up to the setback from Lime Hill Road as it spins around. And the closest point on the existing to Lime Hill again, because it's on this corner, is going to stay the same dimension that it is now, 40, 40.1 feet, so that it's conforming. This extension is conforming at 40.6. This is occupying a space that a deck, an existing deck already extends. So, there's no increase in that abutter setback, but it does change the coverage. But the coverage only goes to 11. It's very, it's still conforming, is what I'm saying. Okay, we're on the second This is the second floor. We've added these dormers here and made some changes in the upper parts of these additions that we're building, a study space and a storage space, which they want. In the basement, we've added a bathroom so that it's easier for people to recreate in the basement. It's basically a game space. So, let's go to the elevations. So, this is the new front elevation. If you look at the existing, there's just a bare roof here and a door with a stoop. So, we've added a little porch, and these two dormers, and these flanking roofs, which give it a better presence on the street, and this establishes what I consider a high standard of streetscape. This is on the north side, where this is being, this addition, extension of the master bedroom is being added on here. But it's not any, there's no more impact from that addition, because it nestles right into the existing gable end of the main part of the existing house. So, the next elevation is the rear of the house. This is unchanged, except for these little addition. This is a slider going into the sunroom space. And this is the sunroom windows facing south that attaches right on to the deck as it's extended. If you could show the survey. So, here is the sunroom addition. Here's the master bedroom. Here are the two dormers. Here's the covered, little covered porch addition. But you can see, because it's on a corner, and Lime Hill goes around this corner, going south this way and north up this way, that there's quite a lot of space that sets off this house and contributes. And there are a lot of existing trees, these pine trees. I think it's very attractive, and I don't think these additions detract from that, or have any adverse impact. Everything I'll read the, oh, I should also mention, which I'll mention, the criteria.
You're welcome to go through the applicable criteria, if you'd like, and leave out one.
Excuse me?
You're welcome to go over the applicable criteria, if you like, and leave out the ones that aren't applicable.
Then I have.
However you want to do it.
The Doyle's have owned the property for more than 10 years with the intention of using it in long-term for retirement. The corner lot has two conforming front yards facing Lime Hill Road, one facing west and the other facing north. On the west side from the front of the house, a broad lawn faces Lime Hill Road, and it turns, as it turns the corner, and a broad driveway descends from the lower level of one-car garage. Additionally, there is a rear yard which provides for privacy for the deck and brick terrace, which they plan to enlarge. The frontage of over 225 feet complies with the bylaw, but the lot size of 14,070 square feet does not meet the 40,000 square feet required in the R40 district. The house sits very comfortably on the lot, as viewed from any point on the road, because it is set back from Lime Hill 40.1 feet on the west and 48.0 feet on the north, where the 40 feet, where 40 feet is required. Its setback from Lime Hill Road is more comfortable for its corner location, and it helps that the corner is treeed and otherwise landscaped to contribute to the open feeling of the lot. The proposed additions preserve the 40-foot setback to both parts of Lime Hill Road, on the west and on the Compatibility of the size with neighboring properties. The Doyle's lot is 14,070 square feet, with a house built in 1991 as part of a subdivision done in the late 50s, which stretches out along Lime Hill Road from Main Street to the Oyster Pond. The other properties in the neighborhood include Christopher Harding Lane, were built beginning in the 1960s and filling out by 2002. A few lots are less an area than 13,000 square feet to 14,000 square. The others are up to 20,300 square feet and less, except for the two at 1.67 acres at the end of the street. All but these two are non-conforming in the R40 district. The largest is 20,900. The Doyle's property benefits from the corner lot having a spacious feeling of the double road setbacks. Extend of the increase in the non-conforming nature. Fortunately, the extension of the main bedroom and its own main bathroom could be accomplished by only using the space up to the north road setback. The creation of a front entry porch all could be accomplished by keeping to the west road setback. The new dormers for the additional light and air in the existing second-floor bedrooms are fully within the existing house footprint. Only the addition of the new sunroom extends into the side yard setback, but only up to the end of the existing deck does the addition encroach no farther than the deck that is already there. The resulting increase in coverage goes from 7.9% to 11.8%, well under the maximum of 15%. Suitability of the site, including impact on neighborhood properties. The Doyle's property is very much like their neighbors, with uses appropriate to small residences on landscaping, landscape properties. The various additions to the house while achieving a range of functional uses, at the same time, developing a detailed and varied streetscape for the neighborhood. Impact on the visual character of views and vistas. The Doyle's house roof line is not changing from its conforming height of 24.4 feet, which is below the zoning maximum of 30 feet. The new addition roofs with ridge heights lower than the main ridge are set in the woods and block no views from neighboring houses. The additions are designed to fit in with the neighborhood houses, with the matching roof pitches and rake details, window and door trim, siding choices, and pane windows. Compatibility with the neighboring uses. The proposed structure is purely residential in nature and fully compatible with all the residential neighbors. The house is designed as a Cape single-story house with dormers and an entry porch to improve visual character and enrich the streetscape. Adequacy of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage. The existing house has onsite septic system. No increase in the number of bedrooms is contemplated. The sewer has been installed in the street, and a hookup is next in progress, we hope. Impact on traffic flow and safety. The proposed project has no effect on traffic flow and safety parking for the owner's use, and any guests or construction vehicles could be arranged on the broad driveway. Noise and litter. Construction should be completed over, oh, construction should be completed over a short amount of time during the winter and after the summer, if the project is so conditioned. And the conditions of the previous applicant would obviously be very acceptable to us. We foresee no congestion on Lime Hill Road. The adequacy of utilities and public services. The house is adequately served by water, gas, and electric service. Visual impact on the neighborhood. The new additions do not differ much in the style of the main house. Same trim set, same white cedar shingles. And there's clabberts on the front of the house. The dwelling in the floodplain, the house is not located in the floodplain, and in no way interferes or increases the natural flow of drainage in the area. The new sunroom addition, replacement of the deck, and the non-conforming lot size have findings by this board of substantially not more detrimental to the neighborhood, and a special permit could be granted. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience or on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate.
I see no one to speak in favor.
Okay, I'll read the few correspondences that we have. This is from Judith Giorgio, the health agent, 2624 is the date. I have reviewed the plan to renovate this property. The existing dwelling has three bedrooms, and there is no increase in septic flow proposed. The new addition will not encroach on the septic system, and the basement is not approved as a bedroom. Conservation Commission writes, "On January 31, 2024, the project was heard on January 31, 2024. It was issued a negative two determination. The project as proposed meets the performance standard under the Wetlands Protection Act. In the Town of Chatham Wetlands bylaw, regulations promulgated thereunder for a negative determination for applicability." Then we have a letter from Robert and Lindsey Burns of 147 Lime Hill Road dated, let's see, February 6, 2024. "As an abutter to the Doyle's, we are in favor of their construction plans at 135 Lime Hill Road." We have a letter from Larissa Bevan of 64 Linden Tree Lane, and she writes, "On January 23, 2024, I'm writing to express my support for the application of the property located at 135 Lime Hill Road. I'm an abutter. I own property on 64 Linden. I have read the application, understand and support the request to enlarge, change the non-conforming dwelling. I cannot attend the meeting, but I hope this letter helps the project become approved." And then she gives her phone number. So, if there's anybody in the audience or on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak against this application, please indicate. Seeing none?
I see no one to speak in opposition or with a question.
Questions from the board. Dave Veach.
I have no questions.
Dave Nixon?
I have no questions.
Paul?
I have no questions.
Jenny?
No questions.
I'm sorry, Lee?
I have no questions.
I wasn't trying to be tricky. Steve DeBoer?
And I have no questions.
All right, Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds.
Jenny?
Jenny approves.
Steve?
Steve DeBoer approves.
I approve.
Paul?
All approves.
Oh, Dave?
I approve.
And I approve.
And, okay, so deliberations. Dave Nixon?
I think this is an improvement in the looks and the use. I can't think of any reason that it would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Not at all. In fact, I can't even think of a minor reason. So, all in all, good plan.
Dave Veach?
I agree. Nice design, Sam. It fits right in, and complements the house. It's there. Certainly not substantially more detrimental, and I'll support it.
Jenny?
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues. I think what you have proposed is very nice, thoughtful, attractive, all four sides, meets all of our criteria. I would approve it.
Steve?
I think it's.
I think it's great. You've made some modest changes to the house and I think you've made it much improved.
Lee.
I agree with all the previous comments. Really nice design, modest, and very appropriate.
Okay, Paul.
And I also agree with my prior comments of my colleagues. I'll move to approve the application as submitted with, I think, in this instance, perhaps the standard conditions make sense. So that all construction activity and vehicles would be contained onsite or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. Between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction would be allowed, no work would be permitted on weekends, and construction activity would be between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only.
Dave Veitch seconds.
Ginny.
Ginny approves.
Lee.
I approve.
Paul approves.
Dave.
I approve.
Dave Veitch approves.
Okay, that's that.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Application number 23-130. Matt J. Gavin and Allison S. Gavin, care of Ken Murphy, P.O. Box 43, West Chatham, Mass. 02669. Owners of property located at 80 Old Mail Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 14I, Block 27, Lot AC7. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a nonconforming dwelling on a nonconforming lot via the construction of an addition and deck. The existing dwelling is nonconforming in that it is located 19.39 feet from the road and 19.54 feet from the Westerly Abutter. The proposed deck will be nonconforming in that it will be located 30.04 feet from the road where a 40-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 889 square feet, 8.89%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,209 square feet, 12.09%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming in that it contains 10,000 square feet where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6 and Section 5, be of protective bylaw.
Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your time and the board. My name is Ken Murphy. I am representing the Gavins for 80 Old Mail, and my clients are just would like to do an addition off the rear of their property. We feel it's not detrimental to the neighborhood, and they have a pretty good-sized family. He has four kids, and they've kind of grown, and they're trying to make some room because my client feels like every time they come to see their house in the summertime, they're on top of each other. So, we came up with a bigger plan to do a little bit more of a kitchen space so they can entertain for themselves and, you know, a decent-sized deck because they have a deck now, but it's aged. So, it'd be the appropriate time to redo it, you know, and make it a little bit bigger so that they can enjoy the outside decking, you know, for tables or picnics at the same time they, if they decide it's bad weather, they want to stay inside. They did add a lower level, and it's going to be storage. They have no plans on making it into a bedroom. They do have a proposed bathroom in that space also, but they do have a bathroom in the existing house, which is, again, they've been there for 25 years and they're planning on in the future redoing or probably possibly removing that bathroom because now they have a, they'll be doing a newer, you know, nicer, bigger bathroom because the other one's kind of a dated space since he's owned the property for 25 years. And I can kind of go through my application permit.
And you're welcome to go through the applicable criteria too, if you'd like.
Excellent. I'll do that right now if I could. Number one, adequacy of the site and the site in terms of the proposed use. We feel it meets all the requirements. It's still under lock coverage. We've met the setbacks. We've gone from, as you can see there, from 9.4% up to 12%, still which meets the 15% lock coverage. The setbacks in the deck all meet the setbacks in lock coverage. And number two, sustainable to the size of proposed. I think it's a decent size. It's in the back of the property. It doesn't interfere with the neighbors driving by. You would never really know it if you, you know, go really slow still on that Old Mail, which is a really tiny, bumpy road. You probably wouldn't notice it all unless you really looked really hard. Number three, impact of traffic flow and safety. With everything being in the rear, it would not affect the traffic and safety at all because it's really following them and their family. They don't, they do not rent the property out to anyone. It's just for them, they're here usually only, you know, a number of times in the summertime to enjoy the house. Four, impact of neighborhood visual character, including views and vista. Again, this is pretty much all the additions in the rear, and, you know, we try to spice up a little bit and take advantage of the, you know, in the morning when it comes from the east and then sun sets on the west side, if they're in the kitchen area, they'll be able to entertain and, you know, for themselves and enjoy a morning, you know, sunrise and at the end of the day, see the sunset, which would be nice. Next, number five, adequate method of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage. Again, it's not any more detrimental. The same flow should be still there with the bathroom. In the future, they plan on removing the other bathroom that's a dated bathroom in the lower level. And six, adequate utilities and other public services. That shouldn't change at all. Additional lighting, but a little bit more light. This addition will be, of course, energy efficient, so it should help with nothing being additional to their power or light source or energy. Number seven, noise and litter. Probably only noise will be from their kids probably screaming and enjoying the deck. Other than that, as they grow, hopefully that kind of will be less. Number eight, compatibility of proposed use with surrounding land use. Looking at the other neighborhoods, houses, there are a few people that have done a few additions, but, you know, I think everyone's family's growing now, especially as everyone really wants to stay in Chatham. So, it's kind of a nice touch to have the, a more updated kitchen, something they can enjoy and some place they can kind of relax every day after coming to the Cape and going to the beach all day. Impact of the natural environment, including slopes, vegetation, wetlands, groundwater, and water bodies. We have double doors because they have a pretty drop in their backyard, so there'll be one door to come in into the storage area to go to Lola if needed, and then there's another door to access, oops, excuse me, to the other side. So, that way, you know, if they want to go around, it's possible, but it just makes it easier going right through the addition if needed. Lastly is number 10, impact of neighborhood, town visual character of the formula business established. I don't think that relates to me at all, so. And that's pretty much it.
All right, well, thank you for your presentation. If there's anybody in the audience, oh, wait, hold one second, let me just finish my sentence. If there's anybody in the audience or on Microsoft team that wishes to speak in favor, please indicate. Ma'am, why don't you get to the microphone?
Hi, everybody. My name is Tracy Shields. I am a Chatham resident. I'm a Chatham business owner. This is, or was, my mother's home, and when she passed away, she left it to myself and my sister, who is Allison Gavin. And I just wanted to put in my support as somebody who really is trying, is advocating for people not to sell small houses like this and then be torn down. They're trying to make it more usable for them. It's really just the kitchen and then the added basement space and the bathroom, and I really would like them to stick around and still come to Chatham and just wanted to put my two cents in.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor, either here or on Microsoft Teams? Please indicate.
I see no one else to speak in favor.
All right, I'll read the correspondence, not too many. All right. Judith Giorgio, the health agent, writes on 2520, whoa, it says actually 25627, so.
Yeah, I saw that, kind of.
Yeah, yeah. We're just going to take that as 2624. I have reviewed the plan to renovate this property because I actually read this email today, so I know it did come today. The proposed addition may add septic flow to the property, the storage area in the basement with a full bath inside is a concern. It has adequate privacy, natural light, negress, meeting the Board of Health, bedroom definition. Additionally, the slab on grade may encroach on the 10-foot allowed setback to the septic tank. A site plan showing a new location for the septic tank and permit to replace or move will be required. Further review is needed. And I understand you know that.
Yes.
Sure.
Yes.
Great, all right. All right, from Joyce Lance on January 23, 2024. She writes that she's writing to support Matt Gavin's request to expand. He and his family are wonderful people and exceptionally good neighbors. I'd hate to see them leave Old Mail Road. Allison's family and her mom, Mary Flynn, who passed away several years ago, have owned the house for over 25 years. I hope the zoning Board of Appeal will approve. And she is at 70 Old Mail Road. That could be it. Nope. Debbie Howard writes on Wednesday, January 24, 2024. Good morning. I wanted to send a quick email to express our support for the proposed project at 80 Old Mail Road in North Chatham. We live across the street at 101 Old Mail and just completed our own reservation renovation last year. The plan at 80 Old Mail to me and my husband seemed to, we think it fits with the neighborhood. As to the front of the house, it will not be changed to the street. It's a nice family who'd like to have more living space in this very small house. Thank you, Debbie and Randy Howard. That'll do it. Is anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this application? Please make yourself known.
I see no one in opposition or with a question.
All right, questions from the board. Paul.
I have no questions.
Lee.
I have no questions.
Steve.
I guess I would question how you intend to address the letter from the Board of Health concerning the septic system and the additional bathroom and.
I had reached out to Judith today to let her know that we do have plans to move the septic 10 feet away for the requirement to make, of course, it correct. So, that's definitely part of our plan.
Okay.
That was in discussion from the beginning. We just didn't present it yet, but that's definitely had been designed, and we submitted the information already to the Health Department, and for some reason, it didn't get to her, so we'll have to find out what happened, but that has been submitted.
But that's going to need to be addressed before you go much further, probably.
Right, right, correct.
And Sarah will add to that.
So, I do have an updated comment from the health agent, Judith Giorgio. They've already pulled the permit with the Health Department to move the septic tank, so the board can feel free to go ahead with the application.
Yep, good question. Ginny, question.
It's a question for Sarah. I think I know the answer. So, the building coverage says in the ad that it's 12.9, and, which is correct. It looks like on the site plan, you're including the shed, but I don't think you need to include a shed when it's less than 100 square feet. So, I'm giving you 52 square feet back, right, Sarah?
That is, that is correct. One shed less than 100 square feet is excluded from your building coverage.
Perfect.
Okay, good, which is all I saw here, so, okay. That was my, not a question, but a comment.
Thank you.
Dave Nixon.
I have no questions, thank you.
Dave Veitch.
So, then the only other part that I'm, is the other part of Judy Giorgio's letter, which is talking about interpretation of the basement as potentially as a bedroom and adding a bedroom. Has that been resolved or do you have a, what's?
Well, yes. What we plan on doing, there's a three-foot case opening. We're going to make it a four-foot case opening, so it would meet, would not meet the definition of a bedroom.
Okay, so you've worked out a way to avoid the definition of a bedroom.
Correct.
In order to move ahead with this, okay.
Yes.
That's all I had, thanks. Yeah, good.
Okay, very good. So, that was all the questions. Can I have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veitch seconds.
All right, Ginny.
Ginny approves.
Lee.
Lee approves.
Paul approves.
Dave.
I approve.
Dave Veitch approves.
All right. Deliberations, Steve.
I think it's a good project. I don't think anyone's really going to see it. I think some of your neighbors have said that already.
Perfect.
And as long as you can address those other things, I don't think there's going to be an issue.
Excellent.
Ginny.
Yes, I think that they are very nice, you did a nice summary too, by the way.
Very nice changes, the proposed changes, very attractive.
I agree with the relative that spoke on behalf of their family that it is nice to take a, you know, the home is, wants to expand, and I think it's thoughtful to build out that back and take advantage of that slope. The property, square feet, the lot is small, so very thoughtful additions to get more space and to not tear it down and build something else. So, I was very favorable.
Lee.
I agree. I think it's a great plan. It's a great way to maximize the space going down below and utilizing that, and I think it's going to be very attractive.
Dave Veitch.
Yeah, I agree with Paul previously. I really, really appreciate that this is a, you know, a small addition in the back. It's not a, it's not really going to change much from the street, and although I was thinking that we perhaps could, as we did at our last meeting, we could throw in a free cupola too, and, you know, and, you know, just kidding.
No, he's not.
I'm not kidding. No, it's a, it's a very well-presented and conceived project and will support it.
Dave Nixon.
Yeah, this is adding 320 square feet. It totally makes sense, still way under the max. I can't think of any reason not to support it fully.
And Paul.
I agree. I think it's certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and we encourage young kids having fun on the decks when they can in the summertime.
So, what do you think?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted. I think probably the standard conditions make sense given this location, so I'll move to approve on the basis that all construction activity and vehicles will be contained onsite or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner, that between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed, no work would be permitted on weekends, and construction activity would be between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only.
Dave Veitch seconds.
All right, Ginny.
Ginny approves.
Lee.
I approve.
All votes yes.
I vote yes.
And I vote yes.
Unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you, Madam Chair and the board. Appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
It's going to get tricky with an elevator. No, it's challenging. That's why I said you'd have to wait until I finish my sentence. Yes, yeah. More than people would think, right? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm trying to come down to some kind of a science. Oh, next application.
Application number 23-129, David and Sheila Hepp, care of William G. Litchfield Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owners of property located at 22 Hilltop Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 9B, Block 29, Lot 17. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a nonconforming dwelling on a conforming lot via the construction of additions, decks, and a garage with habitable space above. The existing dwelling is nonconforming in that the uppermost level exceeds 50% of the floor below by 80 square feet, and the existing building height is 32.1 feet where 30 feet is the maximum allowed. The proposed uppermost level will be nonconforming in that it will exceed the allowable 50% by 207 square feet. No changes proposed to the building height. Also proposed is the construction of conforming additions and a garage with habitable space. The existing building coverage is 2,342 square feet, and the proposed building coverage is 2,989 square feet where 3,000 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot contains 28,210 square feet in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6 and Section 5, be of protective bylaw.
Mr. Litchfield, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Bill Litchfield here on behalf of David and Sheila Hepp. As I believe you are aware, we requested in writing in accordance with your rules, and we are today formally requesting an extension of this matter, a continuance until April 25, for some redesign of the plans.
Okay. Mr. Veitch, you wanted to speak a little bit on this.
Yes, Bill, I just wanted, if you could convey to the architect, I was having a little bit of difficulty reading the plan, my, the plans, and. I, I was having a little bit of difficulty, um, reading the plan, my, my, the plans, and, um, yeah, I think it's, it's, it's kind of an extension of, of the reduction in size, which I very much appreciate, looking at eleven by seventeen drawings over full scale, but in, in this case, um, in combination with that, the, um, architect has i- i- in, in the elevation drawings, uh, and I, I would assume he's done this because he's kind of trying to show foreground and background somewhat, but he'll, he has some somewhat faded lines showing dormers and things. And, and although I appreciate the effort to, to kind of introduce, uh, some, another dimension to the elevations, I, I was having a little trouble just trying to picture the building because at first I didn't see some of those. So, between that and, and, and then I finally, oh, okay, there they are. Between those lines and some of the, um, schedules and things, maybe it was just in the copying process. It, maybe it should have been copied a little darker, whatever. It would be, it just affected the legibility, and I wanted to pass that along.
I appreciate that. I believe Rod Serling introduced another dimension, but that's not the one that you're speaking about.
No.
Uh, because there will be revised plans, I will make sure the architect produces them in a entirely legible manner.
Thank you.
Okay, so Paul?
I will move to grant the request and continuance to...
April twenty-five.
April twenty-five, twenty-twenty-four.
Ginny?
Ginny says yes.
Lee?
I vote yes.
All votes yes?
Dave?
Yes.
Dave.
And I second it.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, the last one, yes.
Application number twenty-four dash zero-zero-five, Joseph G. Jean Gregorio, Junior Living Trust, care of William G. Litchfield Esquire, three-thirty Orleans Road, North Chatham Mass. zero-two-six-five-zero. Owner of property located at twenty-two Great Hill Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham Assessor's map, thirteen G, block fifty-three, lot C two. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the construction of an addition. The existing dwelling is non-conforming in that it is located thirty-nine point nine feet from Great Hill Road where a forty-foot setback is required, seventeen point five-two feet from the westerly of butter, and twenty-four point one feet from the easterly of butter where a twenty-five foot setback is required. The proposed addition will conform to road and a butter setback requirements. The existing building coverage is one thousand six hundred ninety-one square feet, fifteen point four percent, and the proposed building coverage is one thousand six hundred ninety-eight square feet, fifteen point four percent, where fifteen percent is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains eleven thousand square feet where forty thousand square feet is required in the R forty zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section six, and Section five B of the protective bylaw.
Mr. Litchfield?
Good afternoon, Bill Litchfield here on behalf of Joseph and Karen Jean Gregorio in regard to the property of twenty-two Great Hill Road. There are essentially three words, uh, which are my presentation, seven square feet.
I move the question.
Yeah.
I'll be happy to, and, yeah, present more, but I think you understand the issue.
What do they want to do with seven square feet?
They'd like to expand their kitchen, uh, but I thought about how to talk to the Department of Community Development, but there's really no such thing as truly de minimis, de minimis when you're over, and if I ask for seven square feet, well, what about nine? And what about twenty-two? So I understand why we have to go through the exercise, but we can perhaps keep it brief.
Okay, so if you give a mouse a cookie, in other words. All right, so, um, is there anybody here or on Microsoft teams that wishes to speak in favor? If so, please indicate. Seeing none?
There's no one in favor.
I will read the one short correspondence from Judith Giorgio dated today, no, two days ago, February sixth, twenty-twenty-four. "I have no concerns about the small addition to this property." If there's anybody here or on Microsoft teams that wishes to speak against the application, please indicate. Seeing none?
No one in opposition.
Questions from the board. Dave Veach?
I have no questions.
Dave Nixon?
None.
Paul?
No questions.
Lee?
No questions.
Steve?
I have no questions.
And Ginny?
No questions.
Paul?
I'll move to, uh, close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds.
Ginny?
Ginny approves.
Lee?
I approve.
Paul?
Paul approves?
Dave?
Yes.
Dave?
Veach approves.
All right, deliberations. Uh, Steve DeBoer?
Um, I, I have nothing to say. Uh, for seven square feet, and I think it's, you know, a, a needed addition, and I don't think anyone's even gonna notice.
All right. Ginny?
I think it's great too. Um, it's an exciting change to, the, the, the floor plan is, um, it's a really thoughtful, um, you need the extra space.
I agree.
It's in the back.
Yep.
Um, the ha, it's appropriate for the neighborhood meets criteria. It, I appreciate you saying it, it's over. It doesn't actually register from a percentage point of view, but, um, but I, 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 I think it's great.
Lee?
I agree. I think it's gonna be a great addition, make a big difference.
Dave Veach?
Uh, pretty good example of no substantial detriment to the neighborhood.
Okay, Dave Nixon?
No, it's a, it's a good, as Mr. Litchfield pointed out, you know, it's only seven square feet, but it is over, and as the building commissar and I have discussed in the past, um, you know, if it's over, it's over, and it needs to come here.
And Paul?
Well, seven square feet, I think it's outrageous, just outrageous. I'm kidding. It's clearly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I'll move to approve the application as submitted, uh...
Without conditions, perhaps?
I'm, I'm not sure that there's any need for conditions, unless anybody on the board sees a need for conditions.
No.
All right, I'll move to approve it as submitted.
Uh, Dave Veach seconds.
All right, Ginny?
Ginny votes yes.
Please.
I vote yes.
Paul?
All votes yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And Dave?
Veach votes yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
And that...
One more motion.
Oh, one more motion, well...
I will, uh, move to adjourn.
That was the motion?
Yes.
That's it? Oh, okay.
Dave Veach seconds.
Dave?
Yes.
Dave?
Veach votes yes.
Ginny?
Ginny votes yes.
And Steve?
I vote yes.
Steve votes on that, yes?
Yes.
Yeah, and Paul?
And Paul votes yes.
And I vote yes as well. Good night, Chatham.
It is five twelve PM.